Yeah.
Not review.
So yeah.
This is.
Yeah, this is.
So we get a little bit.
It's the last one.
Well, I just spoke about the hundred million.
But it was.
But it was awesome. Well, go CJ.
Bye.
Just now. So.
Why does it bother you?
It's like.
And you thought I blew that.
Well, according to.
Oh, yeah. Fair.
Down for me, just someone.
Oh. amended and restated man as a rule of twenty twenty.
What's that?
He made more.
That's the.
Yeah.
Or did somebody in the.
Yeah, right.
To make it something.
Well, he said, Jim, may you make vegan.
That's how I read it.
But I I read it at least.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
That's.
That's all right.
We can.
Better move.
I don't know.
That's.
Wow, we had my mother in the whole like a bright. She was in the freezer room.
It's always warm in here.
You guys talk.
Yes, different.
It was then all.
It's funny this morning and I totally forgot.
Yeah.
True setting. I see both.
Yeah, that's right.
Watch it.
Pretty negative. Some good questions were asked by. You and we'll council members.
New adults. Well.
Yeah. Season, you know, season, the old town song.
Okay, okay. I thank you, Billy.
Hmm hmm. Yeah. No, yeah, no, 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 no. They were they were the only persons present.
Oh, he does. That was it.
That was it.
That was one person. Yes.
It's trying not to be wrong.
You can you can paint yourself a pride.
I didn't you didn't bring a gavel, so I couldn't really get that out.
I should have passed it on you.
I don't know.
Well, I think my year will go.
All right.
I think you can bring your own hand hammer on.
I I thought about it. I really did. But.
I have a couple, actually.
I have a couple too, but you never can have another.
True.
Because you're always looking for one. It's like, well, you like what they know.
You guys are scary.
Well, you know, as the song go, if I had a hammer, so I'd hammer the evening. Hammer in the morning, all over the slayer. You're a good guy.
Yeah.
Can make you hold the nail.
Then you wouldn't be scared. So where did you cut?
Oh, yeah, I can show you the fun pictures with the before after.
They stitched.
Oh, yeah. So that's the before.
Oh. Aren't you cut yourself?
His wife. A can of pumpkin. She tried to open the can opener. It's an old can where it didn't cut on two sides. So I lifted it with my fingers and pull. And it gave way and this tension of my fingers. Jammed it into my hand.
Not pretty.
But let me tell you, the folks at the urgent care, they were. It was so funny, though. I walk in, the woman right in front of me also had a laceration. Her hand and the person, man, we haven't had lots stitching lacerations in months. Now we had four today.
I'm like.
All right, folks, I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is seven P M. If we can start with the moment of silence, please. If we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, if you happen to have a cell phone on you, please make sure it's off or on silence. City, quick, make up your take roll call for us, please.
Council member Williams.
Fred.
Reed. Stuart. Ross.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So move.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So this evening, we will start off with a presentation from our D D A chairperson, Miss Emily Rebecca. Emily, I see that you have a presentation.
Yeah, I do. I also provided. Hard copies. Yeah. He's not so tall anymore.
Yeah, we figured.
Yeah. Um, so today's presentation is actually a little twofold. Um, one is in conversation with uh the city manager and our clerk. Regarding when the D D A needed to revise and update our uh our development plan. We sort of discovered along the way that uh this development plan was the uh victim of COVID. The uh the D D A started developing this plan in twenty nineteen. Uh, all part of Governor Snyder's Project Rising Tide program that out that was appointed in. So uh the state legislature had required downtown development authorities and other authorities to have development plans uh to in hopes. I think uh diminish the amount of uh municipalities that were collecting tax increment or taxes and then sitting on them without. They were just accumulating without any active plans. So um at the time. Uh, the city manager Snyder um said, here's a perfect opportunity. We had the um the support of um Beckett and Raider um to work to develop this plan. So we went through a process. I would say almost six to eight months between um reviewing records. Uh, collecting data through surveys of visitors, residents, businesses. Um, and a variety of other sources and then evaluating and assessing the current uh ground field and tip plans that had been approved or that were active um and would be in place during this development plan. So uh the D D A approved this development plan, I think in late twenty nineteen, maybe early twenty twenty. Can't remember the event date. Date, and it was slated to come to council for their final approval in the early part of twenty twenty. And it never happened, we found out. So the D D A has been working off of this plan and using it as our North Star and our guide to the work that we've been doing over the past few years. And then again, when we went to say, does this need to be revised somewhere in the five to seven year range? Or do do we have this? Is what are our requirements on revising this? This is when Jill brought to um our attention that had not yet been approved by council, even though we've um have been uh utilizing it and operating. So. So then um the the city team uh jumped into action over the past few weeks to put out proper notices uh and to be to be able to properly do that. We discussed it um the D D A meeting that what was potentially the best course of action was for uh to come to council for a potential approval of this existing plan and then start the process in working to do a revision. Because I. I know the pandemic really had a significant impact on a lot of the brownfield and tips that were outlined that are still valid and still in play, but the timeline is significantly revised and adjusted. So if you look at, you know, twenty twenty five in some of the projected uh plans and where they would be at in terms of their process. Were so far out of that that it's it it these aren't really accurate reflections in tables anymore. Um, and that's only truly because of the disruption of uh on the pandemic from the pandemic um to um the community and especially these redevelopment projects. So. And with the the thought and the need to come to council, uh D D A is also required to bring um and put to do some updates periodically every year. So typically I will present during um the E D C's economic update. When they do it in on the spring, they switch it to the fall this year. Um, and so I thought, well, this will be perfect to also provide an update on what the D D A has been doing over the past um year and what we're uh planning to do moving into twenty twenty six. The finance director also asked me to touch briefly on D D A's budget um as a part of this and how those connect. So I hope to accomplish that uh this evening for you as well. So. Uh, current members of D D A include um uh Betty, Katie, Nora, Vicki, Jim, and myself. So we still have open seats and I'll touch on the fact that that continues to be a challenge and an opportunity for us moving forward. In our focus for twenty twenty five, we spent um time working on our facade grants. We've been now active or have that project reactivated for the past three years. This was our third poll year. This year, we uh increased the amount of the matching grant from um from five thousand to seven thousand five hundred as a matching grant. That's a fifty percent matching grant, and that will continue on into twenty twenty six. So this year, we awarded three facade grants. Two were completed. One put in a request to extend that grant to next year for completion. So that uh that was approved. And so this ongoing program, it really encourages reinvestment and helps property owners with the the increasing maintenance costs of maintaining historic buildings um in our downtown district. We continue to support um our Albion Community Brand Ambassador and the National Early Connected Communications for coordinated marketing effort and working to grow um our presence and engagement on all of our active platforms, such as Facebook, Instagram, um TikTok, and uh X. So those are the main parts. We also continue to maintain the downtown, maintain the downtown Albion website and the articles and blogs and um productions or pieces of material that go on there. This year, I saw the board, while it's been a priority for us to have those strategic partnerships with other community organizations, that really came to full fruition, I believe, this year with our ongoing communicate collaboration with Community Foundation, uh the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Albion. I think the Christmas in July uh project that in campaign really highlighted the power of the collaboration. We were able to take what would have been a very heavy lift for any independent organization. Uh, the the amount of between ten and fifteen thousand dollars for holiday, expanded holiday decorations downtown. We were able to take a portion of D D A's budget, leverage that for grants from the Community Foundation, and then utilize funding from the Community Foundation and the Chamber to match community donations. So uh we had the opportunity for individuals and organizations to sponsor a poll. You can see out throughout downtown where there's gift tags on each of the poll that are recognizing a number of like everybody who contributed to that campaign. So it was a great example of how you could take small bits and pieces and then also draw in the community support to create, I think, a pretty impactful um project for the downtown holiday decoration. So we continue to look for those opportunities where we can find those great ways to have synergisms um amongst the organizations and within the community. And then, sorry, my logo piece is all on here. Um, Collaboration Corner is the small pocket park that's uh to the side of Big B. That location has been identified, I talked about it um in last year's presentation, as a Hope Memorial location um for Robert Cole. That will include um historical information regarding uh Robert Cole as well as a memorial bench. And the D D A board members, especially Betty and Nora, have really taken the lead on collaborating with local businesses such as Knopf to do a community cleanup of that space. And then they have been working with area um businesses to identify what are the best native plants that can be planted in that area. And I think it's going to be a really great example of how we can take smaller spaces and evaluate what native species and what native plants can be reintroduced to some of the spaces and really create um spaces that are hopefully low maintenance. Um, but also have a reintroduction of some native species and natives plants into those spaces. And then we continue to work on our wayfinding signage. Um, I expect to have it completed here before the end of the year. It's we're counting down the days. Um, it's uh the last steps have to do with M dot. M dot, she said. Rule the roots. Uh, so uh as I have a number of times, um I know I talked to the city manager and the mayor regarding the uh the city council's opportunity to consider the additional signage that was a part of the quote that would match downtown district signage. A lot of those ident- those locations have been identified, and it could be a great opportunity to get that across the finish line for additional signage outside of the downtown district that is all matching um across the community. It's a key places. And then we're really working to pursue those partnerships and potential grants for three large monument signings at city gateways, which would be on the east entrance at Five Points, the south down at the um cemetery and the west along Costa Avenue. Stoffer Plaza. I'm sure you guys ever heard anything about Stoffer Plaza, blah. A few months, four years. So it continues to be a major planning area and a focus for the D D A. It's a challenge. Um, as we know, it's a challenge on so many levels. Um. While the D D A now, almost two years ago, was pretty close to having a development plan for Stoffer Plaza. Was just a a matter of getting some funding and finding the right parts and pieces to fund it. In hindsight, probably best that we didn't get those that grant, get that placemaking grant. We would have really struggled as we approached that project. So uh with the help of the city manager, we're really looking to enlist the support of subject matter experts to evaluate what is the long term possibility and to understand sort of the underlying structures there in Stoffer Plaza to ensure that we aren't spinning our wheels, spending wastefully. Uh, so right now, I would say Stoffer Plaza has a little bit of like a pin in it. We're really working to gather as much information, but I know the city manager would say it's been challenging to get um companies to even engage us on an evaluation of it. So. Grants and funding is a continues to also be a part of it. Our property tax base continues to grow as Tiff Paylands, Progressive, Brownfield reimbursements are filled. We're also exceptionally excited about the collaboration with the new community grant writer. So you'll see in some of our budget work is the more spend on professional services, which reflects the D D A's goal to identify and move some potential projects to a more shovel-ready state so that the community grant writer can then go about working with us to acquire funding, look for good grant matches um for some of those shovel-ready products. Right now, we would have been working to get Stoffer Plaza to a shovel-ready project. Um. Which was pretty much there. We just didn't know that it needs bigger, deeper wetter shovels um than it than it could. So then also the conversation the D D A has been discussing and bringing back the consideration of social district, evaluating what those potential strengths, weaknesses, opportunities are of establishing a social district um in the downtown area, what those boundaries would look like. Active times versus the devet based and the operational needs that come along with the potential implementation of a social district. So those are been areas that we have worked on in twenty twenty five and continue to be areas of focus as we move into twenty twenty six.
Oh.
Oh, no.
We have a printed copy. Would you like to borrow one?
Yeah, if you've got it in a printed copy. Oh, this, there you go, this version. Okay, good. Um. So this is a a pared down version of what you have in uh your budget. I pulled up the most important ones. There, you know, some of them are just required kind of people. So in our twenty twenty five budget, uh the current uh property taxes were right around two hundred. Uh, the finance structure projects them to be about two eighteen for twenty twenty six. The local stabilization grant, and I know um the finance director knows a lot more about those than I do regarding um we ask and then we see what we can get. Uh, so estimated a slight decline from twenty twenty five. And then um the twenty twenty five, so always a part of what is brought in is a trade is ultimately going to be a transfer out to Brownfield and revolving loan fund. So in twenty twenty five, we transferred out about a hundred, just a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. This year, it'll be about ninety eight because again, as those plans work through, then that amount that needs to be transferred out and over to the E E C and the Brownfield Authority in revolving loan fund goes down. I did clarify and asked the finance director um today about how much of that is be because of so the hotel Brownfield plan, the developer has been fully reimbursed. And so it's now into sort of its next phase of its Brownfield plan. First Street Loss is the only other active Brownfield plan that is working through its Brownfield reimbursement. And so um he indicated about fourteen thousand will go to to ground field developer reimbursement, and the remainder of that ninety eight will go into the revolving loan pot. So about that over eighty thousand goes into the revolving loan. He can ask, answer way more questions about that than I can. And then a lot of the other ones are can be some small increases, but as I mentioned, professional services right now. And we didn't even expend all ten thousand this year um for professional services, but we project a potential increase both in the work to start the development plan over again, and then also some of those shovel-ready projects and moving those forward. Administrative fees continue to stay stable. The facade grant we left, the really the total amount is the same. We carried over seven thousand five hundred from this year over into twenty twenty six. So we didn't expend twenty five thousand in this year. We're under budget, but we made sure that the budget reflected. So we can still do um either three seven thousand five hundred dollar grants, or we can do more that are smaller. Uh, community promotions isn't it been another area that the board has been really vocal and clear about wanting to make sure that we are supporting other organizations that are putting out events. So we've increased our community promotions budget from five thousand to fifteen thousand to be able to have budget ready to um support um any other activities that maybe the chamber or visitors bureau or any other organizations are doing that. The the D D A continues to have a pretty reform for any organization that's doing an event in the downtown can request su- support um from us on the communities uh promotion side of it. Um, insurance and bonds stay the same. Capital outline, the ninety thousand from twenty twenty five, a large portion of that is for wayfinding signs. We did drop that this year in, but this twenty five is reflective of what we believe part of the collaboration corner will be. So these are more projects that are you know, in my business world, they're like the hard things, the 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 actual things that you can buy. Um, real investments, not marketing campaigns and those kinds of things. In this world, it's capital outlet. So capital outlet is down from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, just based on the scope of the projects that we're looking at uh completing in twenty twenty six.
Emily.
Yeah.
Uh. Community promotions. Can you give me an example?
So for example, when um when the chamber is doing a number of their car shows, um we will provide additional support and reimbursement for printed materials, marketing budgets, those kinds of things. This year, we provided uh sponsorship to Festival of Forks at a certain level out of our community promotions budget. So it's those kinds of items that a lot like we will walk together in a community promotion.
Something on the top of the.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, the development plan, uh we will be starting the process to evaluate this current one and understand what we need to revise and update into a future D D A development plan. Pending council approves it, you could also tell us to start from start from stage one. Uh, and we would do it uh with a smile. Uh, but we know that we're in a place that we uh are evaluating really based on what things happened during the pandemic in in the value of this plan and um doesn't serve us in its current state right now. So. Challenges, continue that. We have limited capacity constraints, speed of project act. Execution is a challenge for us with uh the volunteer board that we have, not having a director um or a part time director, that just uh is a challenge for us. And then really working to balance our immediate needs with long-term strategic plans. Big plans, big future plans cost a lot. Um, and so we don't want to miss shorter term opportunities um immediate needs because we have the priorities so far out into big projects. But trying to find some sort of balance with that, making sure that we can promote activities, especially things that other organizations are doing. That's a great way for us to support those without doing a large expenditure of ourselves, spending twenty thousand dollars to put on a big event when we can give ten or five thousand dollars to other organizations that are doing the planning, that we can contribute to those events. It's kind of our thought process on those. And our opportunities, we continue to move through some of the active brownfield and tip plans that continues to bring in some additional um tax-based revenue for us. The funds for small box projects, I truly believe can spur on and be part of bigger, larger projects. That's a small organization. We can be nimble like that. We can be the little speedboat when like big city, the big organizations, they're the cruise liners that take them four months to go like, and we want to head this direction now. We can do it in a matter of days if we wanted to. Um, I do think that we continue to get closer to the potential for a part-time D D A director. I call that to be feasible in the coming years, and I really optimistic about our growing public and private partnerships that are emerging um and that are in line with the deep space. That's all.
Do we have any questions for Emily? On the works of the D D A, past and future. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Emily, the uh over what? Um. I know it's a daunting task. Will we be um surveying the community to see um for input to see what community members would like to see in that area?
Yeah, so when we uh a year ago, when we were working with uh white men, that was a part of that first um phase of that process for what the community was really looking for in that space. Um, it included visitors to the downtown districts and residents in the downtown district. So in that first iteration of that plan, we had pe- those pieces of community input. But now that we have literally a clean slate, it will have to be a start over from the, you know, step step one, while still taking in a little bit of the the input from that um first collection of data, that it's going to need to be added in with additional community input from residents, the community as a whole, um businesses and visitors to the downtown district. So absolutely.
Right.
Hmm. Councilman Frost.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mrs. Rebecca, in terms of the challenges that you face, you mentioned you've got unfilled seats on the board. How many unfilled seats do you have?
I think at least three. Jill, correct me if I'm wrong. How many unfilled seats does D D A have? I think at least three. Believe it is three.
Okay, and really benefit of our audience and perhaps the audience that is watching uh candidates or who might be interested in uh joining this board. What are you looking for in those candidates and who can you get in touch with?
Uh, so because it is a city board, just like building authority and the other boards, it all is the application process through the city's website. Um, in terms of what we're looking for, um, we're looking for individuals who have a bit of time to. Have a bit of time to carve out into. Just moving projects forward, uh, even spending time connecting with downtown businesses. Connecting with Cassie, the community and Brett, Baron, Brandon, Master, the more people that are sort of making sure that information is coming in. And going out efficiently is a valuable skill for us to have on the board. And so individuals who are interested in being a part of the D D A, I think. The, the requirements or sort of. Priorities are have some sort of vested interest in the downtown district, so whether they. Are a director, a business owner, a resident in the downtown district, but it can also be. We've had members of Alvin College who have been board members because they have a vested interest in the downtown district. For the community as a whole, so it's a pretty, I think, broad definition of vested interest. For for somebody who might be interested in joining the D D A.
Okay, and where and when are your meetings?
We meet Wednesday mornings, the second Wednesday of the month, always in the mayor's chambers at City Hall. At seven thirty. Yes.
Thank you very much.
In terms of of wayfinding, one of the. Things that we talked about, not necessarily at council, but in different organizations, you know, like. We, I I like to use Marshall as an example, but on the entrance into the city. There's usually a forward that has different organizations that offer you that community. I think I asked about it several years ago, but maybe D D A should be, you're the. Yeah, downtown album, what is expected completion outside signage.
Yeah, so. So the, um. I think it was twenty eighteen, a wayfinding group. Uh, with city staff, I think there were D D A represented, this is before that I was on the D D A. Put together a whole wayfinding plan, um, laid out sort of a scope of the project. For wayfinding all across the community, they identified what are the key. Uh, landmarks that they want to call out, where should signage be placed all throughout the community that was. Directing depending on if if people were coming from the south and all the different places or where they were at, and it includes both. Pedestrian wayfinding and motorized wayfinding, so. The, what we did, what the D D A did was we put on an R F P last year for the whole scope of the signage. And, and so from those signage, um. Johnson Sign Company was our, the, the vendor that we chose to work with. So they've given us a quote on all of the signage that was included in that wayfinding sign. We are moving forward the signs that are located in the downtown district or immediately adjacent to the D D A district. So there's some signage that are like on North Eaton Street, those are pieces and parts of the signage and like out on Michigan Ave like. If you're heading towards Five Points between like the college and Five Point, so that's outside of the district and not quite. Adjacent, like immediately adjacent, so there's. Five signs, I think, in the, um, what that group put together as being additional signs. And when it comes to the monument signs, those are well outside of the downtown district. And so that's why we're really looking to find how we can contribute to those, but not be the only. Uh. Sponder of that project, because I think that gets into. Some sticky parts for us in where the, where the D D A is spending, um, their funding outside of the district. But I think that the case can easily be made for there, it's driving traffic with into. The downtown district, and so I think we can contribute to it, I just don't think that we should be the only or the leader. Uh, in, in my mind, and the Finance Director could told, tell me afterwards, like, you better not spend a dime. Of the downtown district, um, so, so yes, I agree with you that there's. Definitely opportunities and because Johnson has put together the signage that matches with the community branding, it's in alignment with. The, uh, the branding that the. Uh, company did. As a part of Project Rising Tide for the whole community, they had laid out like here's shite signage metrics for a variety. Pedestrian wayfinding or motorized, they laid that all out, and so Johnson has taken that and then, um, and. Has really executed for us in what is, uh, what our current. Landmarks are to be able to call out, so.
Councilwoman Frost.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, being that our, our downtown business district is a designated historic district. How much of, of that? Takes precedence in your decision making as an organization and. Along with that, how much of your budget roughly kind of percentage and or financial aid comes from? Historic tax credits or, or credits that might be related to the fact that it's a historic downtown district?
So none of our revenue comes from historic tax credits. What I think our connection is with historic tax credit is. If a developer chooses as a part of their funding stack. Um, that they're putting together to evaluate if a project is feasible. Historic tax credits are a part of, it's like one of the potential levers. Or pieces that can be put together into the, the whole stack. The D D A has, with the city's help, has the ability to put together like the brownfield plants. Or the tip plans for a project, but we don't have any say impact on, you know, historic. Um, tax credits, and I'm not. Well versed enough in historic tax credits to know that because we're, we are a dedicated historic district. If that makes it any easier for developers in their pursuit of historic tech or. Uh, yeah, pursuit of those historic tax credits, I'm uncertain about that. In terms of what we spend, um. On it, I think we as a board have recognized that the cost of maintaining historic buildings. Are significant, um, and we know that even our, uh, seven thousand five hundred dollars. Kind of a drop in the bucket, uh, but it's, it's what we can do, it's better than nothing is right now is the sort of the board's approach. What we have been talking to with the community grant writer is that there are state level facade grants. I had no idea that that was a thing, so we were having a conversation about, is there a way for us to? Put those like local based side grants with some state facade grants and really create some. Strong funding support pathways for, um, making sure that we can. Uh, maintain and keep our historic buildings in as best condition as, as they possibly can. That kind of answered that a little bit?
It does, thank you, I'm just concerned that we're, we're leveraging that designation as much as we can in our benefit.
Yeah, I think, um, in the little bit of research I've done about historic districts, I, I think if the D D A wanted to pursue some more. Stringent. Guidelines regarding what the historic buildings look like. Need to be, uh, when renovations are done, what kinds of parts and pieces. And I can also balance out the additional, uh, constraints or. Guidelines may make it more difficult for developers if they have. Constraints about materials, types of materials, those kinds of things, I, I think when. When developers are looking to try to put all the parts and pieces together, we have to be as flexible, and so some of it comes from. Trust that the, the developers are going to attempt to keep the characteristics of our historic downtown in their buildings. And right now we don't have any. Guidelines, uh, or policies that would keep that from actually being like having teeth. To that, um, but there's been things recently in terms of signage that I think have been departures away from. What the historic district looks like and the city has. Uh, gone and addressed signage issues, uh, signages, signages that don't comply. With our current signage ordinances, um, that are just in general, um, but also in the downtown district, and so I think those are. You know, we could look at some of those ordinances in and have a conversation about. Are these well positioned to be flexible and also keep? The historic character of the downtown district.
Thank you.
Any questions, Councilwoman Reed?
Who decides if it's? What businesses can come in and if they're historic enough or, or. Or, or what and is there any businesses that are applied for coming in?
So I don't know of any current like outside businesses that are looking for. Like spaces to either rent or buy, I know that there are, are spaces for rent in a number of places. Across the downtown district, um, in those cases, I would point to either the property owner or whoever was doing their. Uh, their rental management on as being businesses, that's a part of the D D A that. More robust D D As have sort of, um, information packets on certain parcels. So that if a developer came and said, I'm looking for something that's between twenty five hundred and thirty five hundred square feet. It's got, you know, these sort of amenities or it's in proximity to X, Y, and Z, if we had some of those. Uh, information pieces and parts of every single parcel that was available. Then that would be a great thing for us to be able to pass along and say, here, these are a couple of properties that are. Uh, right in what you're looking for in terms of square footage or whatever, those kind of constraints might be that they're looking for. That's a part of with a volunteer board, it's a heavy list for us to. Collect all that information, have those. Resources immediately available for, uh, for any sort of developer or business or business that is looking to open in the downtown district, I think. The E D C has a few of those kinds of pieces for parcels. Um, across the community because they are like really looking to recruit developers for different. Um, sites, and so they have site packets, uh, that are really marketing documents, um, for specific spots. We don't have that right now for downtown, uh, parcels or rental opportunities.
So the E D C has had conversations with potential business owners, um, you know. Startups, entrepreneurs who are trying to find space, so I know the E D C has information, you know, like Emily said. So that's typically where like if we were to get anything. You know, brought to me personally, brought to the city, we usually point them to the E D C because they have that information. Well, thank you, Emily, that was a lot of great information. Alright, so I will go ahead, uh, next on the agenda is our public hearing on the amended, um. D D A and TIPA plan. So I will go ahead and open up our public hearing, it is seven forty. So if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to this item. You may come forth and. Address council. Seeing no movement, I will close our public hearing at a seven forty one PM. But do I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five oh five?
Removed.
Support. City manager?
Yes, Mayor Mayor, members of council. Your agenda packet is the proposed. First reading of the ordinance for our downtown development plan, there is a tax capture, this is important to point out. That we are required to notify the other taxing entities. The schools, with the exception of public schools, they are not part of TIPA captures or collections. In this particular case, it might, and neither are public libraries anymore. Um, in this case, it's mostly the, um, county government. And so what we will have to do is we will probably, Emily and I will probably have to address. The Calhoun County Board of Commissioners to go over this because we are kept. Some of their proposed future millages and we need to explain to them that. This was a program that was adopted during the COVID era and that, um. There was no, um. Intentions to leave them out, it's just the way of life in our post-COVID environment. So, um, again. We feel that this. Plan. Development plan is good for our downtown and for our community, we want to keep growing our downtown. Um, so the administration highly endorses adoption of this ordinance. And I welcome any questions or comments.
Councilwoman Williams?
So that I'm clear, we're adopting the twenty twenty. Plan?
It will now be the twenty, if I recall, twenty twenty six plan, just with a new date. From twenty twenty. You're correct. Would you term it that way?
I mean, they've been operating off of the twenty twenty plan that just wasn't adopted in twenty twenty, so it's. Bringing a current to adopt that plan that during COVID just never happened.
Um, do we need to update any of the figures or any of that?
That is being done right now, um, what we're doing is we are projecting out. Based on the latest, um. Taxable values, what that capture will be, the county contacted me on Thursday and is seeking that information. That was turned over, assigned to our assessor, and he is preparing that information as we speak.
Okay, so, um, we'll be amending this when that happens?
I wouldn't think so.
This is just, it's just a readoption of the.
A readoption, got you, um, any of the companies in here, are there? Taxes going to be affected or have we, we've already, my understanding is we've already been doing this, we just haven't actually adopted it.
Right, it, it was a post-COVID environment.
Okay.
Where public hearings and public gatherings couldn't take place. Our records didn't indicate where it had been done because of the restrictions on holding meetings. What we want to do is bring it up to date and have it formally adopted again. By the county and other taxing units.
Council. And what will the duration of the?
I believe it's forty five years.
Twenty five years. For this plan?
Yes, I believe so.
Or until it survives.
It'll revise every five years. And that's what I wanted to do for your vision.
Right, yeah.
And I think you should for ten years or less.
That's fair, this is a tool we need in our toolbox.
Yes, yeah. The reason why. Is because there are different debt. Mechanisms that might be incurred, so you want, you want to achieve the longest period to make sure that. Any debt that's incurred by the D D A in that district is covered. That would be my recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? City clerk, Miguel?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Public comment, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to an agenda item, you may do so at this time. For an agenda item, then yes.
My name is Chris, something was designed at seven oh five.
This is agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll get to.
Consent calendar items, uh, in your packet, you have the minutes from. Consent calendar items uh in your packet. You have the minutes from our November third council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
The board?
Uh if they ever say aye.
Alright.
Closed. Discussion on city hall hours.
Yes, Mayor Mayor members of council, if you remember two meetings ago. Um the administration had brought forth a proposal where we would go to four-day work week. What we wanted to do at the present time, we're asking council to allow us to extend the study. We have winter taxes coming out, as you know, on December first. What we'd like to do is take a measurement of how busy we are in December on Fridays before we implement this. We think it makes sense, provided with all the information prior to making a final decision on this. So what we're going to do is we'll come back in January with the results of how busy we are. I know that the window staff is keeping track of the number of patrons, not only do we serve. But whether or not it be taxes or water bills. So at this time, we're asking the council to allow us to come back in January.
And I guess I would recommend taking that a little step further instead of just keeping track on Fridays, keeping track.
Oh, we do.
Okay.
We do.
And delineate between traffic from morning as opposed to afternoon. For all days.
Okay.
Cause that would be good information to have.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Uh maybe. Short survey, three, four questions for the public to see if the Friday something that would affect them. Think that'll be.
Well, the the thing about it is. Would it be far of a bigger survey?
I try to keep it small just so. You, we want to know how, if it'll be that big of an inconvenience. And then when we go back and say we approve it. We go back, people get the update, okay, um. You know, we've been discussing this. Now it's been approved, Fridays were closed. And people will already be kind of acclimated to.
Yeah, I have a staff meeting tomorrow. I think that the question is, is how elaborate do we want to, I mean, not elaborate. How do we want to survey everyone or sample?
I think you only gonna get a few um responses anyway.
Okay.
We could utilize Facebook possibly uh just to get the engagement. Um. Just something for consideration. We we could speak about it further, but I mean, like I said, I don't think it needs to be that many questions. But as we prob- as we discuss the the water bills and going to um.
Monthly.
Monthly, maybe we add that. You guys spoke about this. The things, things that we're looking at down the road, maybe we can, you know.
Best of public in their.
Yeah, but just for, just for consideration, like I say, maybe it doesn't work, but maybe it doesn't work for us. But you know, I think it's something worth consideration.
It's a good suggestion.
Now it tastes probably easy enough just to poll people when they're coming in already. They're there standing in front of you. Hey, can you take a moment to build this out?
That's true too.
Regardless if they're coming to that front counter, they could become to see Liz, they could be coming some, hey.
And we can have them do a QR code thing and they just knock it out real quick.
I like the idea. The survey, I was thinking maybe we should wait until after we do the. Get the numbers in case you need to pivot a little bit and then, and then based on a proposal. I think the survey is a great idea for letting citizens know that we're looking for feedback.
Gotcha. Perfect. So I'm sure.
Every, every opportunity for community input.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we open on Fridays?
Any other questions or comments on that item? Alright, discussion on our twenty-six budget. It looks like we have information on our desktop. Director Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. Last Thursday, we went over the general fund in pretty, pretty depth with session for a couple hours. And I originally planned uh two study sessions, but. I was given the opportunity to maybe have some time tonight to also continue it. So I picked a few funds that are not that difficult and I think we can get through these pretty quickly. And so I'm going to kind of go through it similarly to what I did when I went through the general fund. Um. First, I want to kind of go over the reports that you're looking at so you can understand them. Uh they're similar to what you were looking at the other night. Uh the first one that we're going to go over is our recreation fund, um two oh eight. And so the farthest left or the first column that you'll see is our twenty twenty-four activity. That's just uh for history purposes. It's nice to look back on that. Uh the second column is the improved budget, the twenty twenty-five uh that council approved. Uh the third column is the uh actual activity through ten months for twenty twenty-five. And the fourth column is the projection of where I think we're going to be at the end of the year. And um once that, once we figure out and approve the projections and they will become our amended budget. For twenty twenty-five. And a new tool that I put in this year um is uh. A column that will show you the changes between the original budget and the projected budget. Of the projected numbers. And so it just shows how we're different from what we originally budgeted. That's the fifth column. And then the second to last column is the requested amounts for twenty twenty-six. Basically the budget that we're asking for for twenty twenty-six. And the final column is another tool um that shows you the difference between our projected numbers. Which will be our amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five budget and our requested budget. So this is our recreation fund. Uh originally, when I budgeted in twenty twenty-five, I'm on the second column now. We did not have a plan if we were going to sign up with the YMCA. A few other scenarios were discussed. And uh so nothing was really budgeted for contracted services. And during the year, we did sign a contract with the YMCA. There's a footnote right below that number and I'm looking at. Uh two oh eight, seven fifty-six, account eight oh two. And that was a two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar. Uh contract with the YMCA and it runs from three seventeen twenty-five to three sixteen twenty-five. So you'll find three payments in twenty twenty-five's figures. And then the last payment for the contract is in the requested budget, which is the second, the last column. And so when you look at what I budgeted versus what actually happened, the main difference is. The contract that we signed with the YMCA. There is a new source of revenue. It's not much. It's something that the state came out with this year. It's uh. Split based on our um taxes for the general fund, the recreation, the streets. And the uh street improvement fund. And um so that's the new figure up on top that says state grants or others. And we'll be getting that, looks like every single year until we're notified that it stopped. So my budget for twenty twenty-six. Is on the second, third, or second to last column. And I only have one payment for the YMCA because I haven't been told if we're going to renew that. Um that's maybe what you guys should discuss for next year or if you have different plans. If we do decide to renew the con- the contract with the YMCA, I can change the budget and make it reflect. Another year with the YMCA. But for now, this is uh what we have budgeted. And it's pretty similar to previous years except for the contract and services.
So the, I mean, um.
Go ahead, Councilman Reed.
Alright, so is the one oh nine what we have right now for next year?
Uh so we have two hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred and forty in revenues.
Okay.
And then we have a hundred and nine four seventy-five in expenses. And that's lower than the previous year because I only have one, the last fourth payment on that contract. If we decide to renew it, and of course, this figure will be a hundred ninety-seven two fifty, just like the previous year.
Okay.
So for now, I have to budget what I know of, not what I think may happen. Yeah.
Councilman Frost?
Thank you, Mayor. David, what is account number five seventy-three, local community stabilization?
Local community stabilization is a revenue that comes in from the state. And it's similar to what we get from uh in the general fund. Um it's a, it's, it's kind of replacing personal property taxes when you get an exempt when you're a business. If you um file the right form, you can have your personal property taxes exempt and not have to pay on that. While the city loses that money, so the state sends that to us in lieu of personal property taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stewart?
Oh, I was just gonna ask you to re-quote the numbers. I was not following you quick enough on the twenty twenty-six you were talking about. I think you said one ninety-seven?
Well, uh the total revenues are going to be two ninety-seven, six forty. And I'm right at the bottom of the second to last column. And the expenses are going to be a hundred and nine four seventy-five. So we anticipate a profit of one eighty-eight, one sixty-five, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one sixty-five. But if we sign the contract again with the YMCA, then that figure will go down.
Did you quote a number that you expected it would be?
Um I didn't quote it because I, we haven't signed it.
Good fun. I thought I remembered this most.
Yeah, so if we decide to go with the YMCA again. That one eighty-eight, that hundred eighty-eight thousand figure at the bottom will go down roughly a hundred and thirty thousand.
Alright, David, um. Eight oh two, the contract was for two sixty-three?
Two hundred and sixty.
Three thousand?
Two hundred and sixty-three thousand.
So we're not anticipating it being two sixty-three?
We have to make that decision.
Yeah.
No one's, no one's made it.
If we decide, cause the contract's good through March.
Yeah.
So I would. My suggestion would say budget for it, but it has to be a council decision.
Right.
At that point to extend the contract for another year or to find a different route.
Yeah.
But at least we have funds allocated. In the twenty-six budget without having to make amendments afterwards.
I was just wondering, cause it was so much, so different.
So just to make financing easier, can we negotiate the contract with YMCA now in December? To have it start in January so that we are every year, rather than having to split that contract over two fiscal years. Just do it in one.
Well, the current contract now runs through.
Understood, but we could ask her to negotiate, good faith, to say we'd like that contract, the renewal of the contract to start in January.
Okay, so let, let's go back um almost a year. There were providers that um did a really good job. And we had allocated based on what they had done in the past. The idea was that we wanted to use some type of measurement of their success. If their programs were growing, we felt that especially in the areas of you, that we would increase their budgets. To help maintain but grow their programs. So there was only one, and I don't want to use this term, out of money, but it was to be distributed based on success. So what we had decided was when we had all the. Outcomes, all the measurements of how we figured out all the organizations. Then we were going to reappropriate. So that's why it makes it a little bit difficult for us to do it based on three quarters as opposed to one year.
Your soldiers got to wait.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I will go ahead and make that adjust. So when we do look at it again, it'll be in there. Any other questions?
I do. Um professional services?
Yes.
Um what, what, what were those?
Um professional service was, was a contract with white men for community recreation improvements. What it's for, I do not know. I don't contract with white men. Maybe Jason may know or maybe the mayor. I just see the bill. But it's a twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollar cons- contract. And it was told to be for community recreation improvements.
Probably a lot of it's plumbing for the restrooms, could be. No?
My, and I don't know without, you know, what the invoices are, but with the appropriations. That we received from the college, a good majority of that was to go towards, you know, the fields. Like Harris Hedgeum, uh so I don't know, that might have been because that was part of it.
The ten thousand dollar grant for Harris Field.
Yeah, that was from Union Foundation.
But they had to do EPA testing based off of that grant funding. So they had to be testing at those sites before they could do work. So that may be a part of it, but I, I'm not a hundred percent sure either.
I could always call Mickey and find out what that's for.
Okay, and um any other grants, they should, should they have been? No, I'm saying the ones from the twenty-four, twenty-five. But I see that we only have the, the segment for the uh state grants. I'm just trying to make sure I got everything.
Yeah, I don't think we received any state grants in the.
Yeah, it's not.
But in our parks department, we would.
How would you um? Yeah, how would you record that in here?
Um grants?
Yeah.
If we receive grants, it would be up in the revenue section. The account five forty.
Any other questions on the recreation budget?
Okay, our next one is on three fourteen. This is our founding account in Parks Village. And this is a check we get. This is basically a fund, but it's a check we get from the uh. From Calhoun County to do a special millage. Um and then we get a check for um. One thing I would like to point out, um of course, the second column is what I budgeted. The only difference from the budget based on what I budgeted. Or the, or the projected numbers is a fifty thousand dollar transfer that uh was brought to council. The transfer to the general fund to help with the river, the River Trail uh extension project. Or, excuse me, the River Trail Base Three project, um which is now on delay. We hope we're going to do it next year. But that was uh brought to council and that was a transfer out of the. Calhoun County Parks Village Fund to the general fund. And that's a form that I had to file with the uh counties to show what we do with their revenue for this fund annually. But everything else is pretty much budgeted. And then next year, you'll see that um. Uh it's basically just the revenue and the interest on the investments, but there's no transfer. That is just a one-time thing. So there's no expenses next year, just revenue. And so we decide what we're going to do, the next time I have to tie the family up, the family, and then we make a meeting. Uh make a decision what would we use the money for, because we have to use the money for something. If we don't, we end up giving it back.
It, it has to be used in the calendar year.
Um no, you can, there's a, there's a certain limit that you have to use. So there's like a, there's like a uh unbalance. And once you get over that, if you haven't used it, you gotta send it back. But this is really almost two years of revenue when we made the fifty. But this is really almost two years of revenue when we made a fifty thousand dollar transfer.
Councilman Stewart.
So what it sounds like, something that needs to be on our agenda. To make sure that either we, if I'm getting this right, if we execute on the River Trail Phase Thirty.
Right.
Or we have another, we divert that to another.
Well, I will bring that to council when that time comes. There's a certain.
You'll be on the deadline.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I get the form from the county and it's, I have so many days to get it ready and then I bring it to council and then we discuss it. And then I fill out that I finish up the form, I send it back to the county and then we'll get to go up another year. I guess if you don't send it back, then you don't get the money. It's something else that I have to, you know, handle. But that's the, uh, on Parkstone. Any questions on that?
We just felt Jason, he has money to spend and he can find a way.
Yeah.
I was going to ask, is there a plan?
Uh, that's up to council. Once that time comes, yeah. Or if you guys want to.
That's.
The agenda for next.
Yeah, I guess I'm intrigued off the, off the river.
Is there a plan, Jason?
There is.
He said there is a.
All right, this next one is just, uh, the last few dollars that were in the, uh, Maple Grove Fund. Of course, we sold a billion in two, uh, in twenty twenty four. I think in November or late.
Skip something? I see solid wings.
What fund did you talk about?
Okay, this is.
Oh, yeah, he's on two seventy seven.
Two twenty six. This is a solid waste fund.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Can you say it again from no twenty six?
Two twenty six. On two twenty six, solid, solid waste fund. So you can see my second column is what the city's budgeted. Um, I know Jason's going to talk a little bit about this, but, um, in twenty twenty four, we did quite a bit of cleanup work based on the state, the state's requirements. Uh, we weren't sure if we were going to do any more in twenty twenty four or in twenty twenty five, so I didn't budget for anything. Uh, we did have to spend more money and Jason can, uh, get into that. But that's really the main difference. And the, uh, activity. Uh, the projected number, which is the fourth column, those is what I budgeted. There is a little bit less in the revenue section up on top. My interest is a little, is about half of what I thought it was going to be because we had to spend some money. And the interest rates went down. Uh, and the local community stabilization money is down. At his account. Five seventy three, uh, I think if you were here for the general fund discussion, I I mentioned that that revenue is down to sixty six percent of what it was the previous year. And we're hoping that it'll go back up. Uh, but that is based on what the state sends us and we have nothing to do with that. It's just what we actually receive. But it was down for twenty twenty five. And then, um. So I'll let Jason maybe discuss the, uh, contracted services there. Also into the second, um, department within that solid waste. Uh, the first, uh, part of it was the tree dump. That's, uh, department five twenty four, right underneath the revenue. The second page is the solid waste fund or solid waste dump in itself. And you can see that the budget for expenses for a hundred, a hundred and fifty one thousand. We came in at two hundred and forty nine thousand. And the main difference is in the contracted services again. Uh, part of that, you can see the footnote goes a little under eighty thousand for the community cleanup with Granger. And the rest of it was, um, s- some bio cleanup. You never know what you're going to get when the bios cleanup goes come in, but I'll let Jason discuss that. But the rest of it was really not too bad, assuming the, uh, contracted services, which made the total expenses go up about a hundred thousand. And that's the ninety nine, three fifty number in the third column to be in, which is the difference between what we project and what we originally budgeted for in twenty twenty five.
And that password's due to what again?
It was due to the, um, most of listening to the cleanup, the community cleanup, which was a little under eighty thousand. There's a footnote right underneath there in blue. There was one other big bill for like thirty nine thousand for bio cleanup. And one of, one other small one that was, um, I think two or three thousand if I'm memory serves me right. But the major part of it was the community cleanup. That was not budgeted for. And then you can see the twenty twenty six requested budget. And really revenues are going to be just about what expenses are. I would like to go with the transfers out, which are in the second page again, on the blue shaded area on the bottom. Um. Twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six, it will be a fifty thousand dollar transfer into the equipment fund uh, to help with the deficit elimination plan that was brought to council a couple, maybe a month ago. Uh, that plan was filed with the state of Michigan and was approved. So that will happen the next couple of years. In twenty twenty six, um, we're going to transfer sixty, we're asking to transfer sixty five thousand to the general fund to cover the contracted costs for the EPA cleanup. And Jason can go into that a little bit. And then, uh, each year, uh, just like in the past, there's twenty five thousand that go through the general fund for disposal of brush, grass and limbs. And then there's also twenty thousand that goes to the general fund for trash and dumpsters. And that's happened every year since I've been here.
The cash, cash balance, um, in the solid waste.
I don't know that right off the hand. I mean, I don't, I don't keep all the cash balances up in my head.
But it's considerable, right?
Yeah.
So if council were to adopt this budget, there'd be no problem covering the costs.
No, because remember the solid waste fund gets, um, property tax revenue. If we go up on the top, you can see the breakdown of the projected revenue. Um, and we're on the first page to the second to last column. Uh, I am budgeting two hundred and thirty six thousand for property taxes. Um, there's some other, uh, thing, uh, payments in lieu of taxes that come in, penalty and interest on the PAC bills, state grants other, there's a little bit of money that comes in. Um, on that new revenue that I was talking about earlier. And, uh, uh, recreation fund, local stabilization money comes in and interest on our investments. So our total revenue that we that, that we got budgeted is four hundred and twenty five thousand. So. Even with all the transfers and everything, that fund will just about almost break even. But we don't anticipate doing the, uh, fifty thousand for the, uh, deficit elimination plan every single year going forward. Just for the next couple of years.
So then, um, one of the questions council had was, um, on an annual basis, the community cleanup. That would put a large dent in our, uh, cash reserves, would it not?
Yes, if we added it this year, it would, um, take eighty thousand dollars roughly if it's the same amount out of our investments for the fund.
Just to remind everybody, um, we, our tonnage, um, was quite substantial that, uh, Granger had done for us. It had not been done in several years. It was a way of us trying to accelerate our efforts to clean up our community, so to speak. I think it was met with a lot of favorable. It gave people an idea of getting rid of things that they don't have. However, um, David and I felt that we should pursue an austere budget this year. But that's totally up to council how aggressive you want us to go with the community cleanup.
I think it was good because a lot of people did have a lot of junk around their house that they they couldn't, it's something that you couldn't put in your trash can, you know, and, and they were just piling up. And it did help them to get cleaned up around their property, which makes the city look better.
I would agree. I don't think, I think we put a pretty good dent in last year's effort. But, uh, again, you know, we took the approach of having a pretty strict and austere budget this year. So I'll, I'll defer back to council.
Yeah, councilman Stewart.
A couple of, a couple of things. So if I'm looking at the line item eight oh two in the appro- appropriation, we're, we're doing sixty five for twenty twenty six where we did twenty five. Um, yeah, in twenty twenty five. So we're raising it by forty. And as, as far as expenses go, I don't know. What page are you on, Jim? Sorry. I'm, I'm, uh, the first page of this solid waste. You said eight oh two? Oh, excuse me, I'm on the second page of the solid waste one. Oh, sorry. Eight oh two appropriation. Yeah, that's contractual service a hundred and fifty.
So budgeting for twenty twenty six is sixty five thousand. And for the previous year, I budgeted for twenty five thousand.
Okay, so my, my point and that if we're on, we might not be all in the same place yet, but it's two twenty six, five twenty seven, eight oh two. Five twenty contractual services. Got it, got it. Thank you. So sixty five and twenty five, so it reads to me that we're looking forty thousand additional this year. And I'm probably getting this wrong, but it, that seems like that potentially we have forty to do our community cleanup. And then my second question, I'm just thinking about, and I guess I'd be looking at Jason on this is would we expect that maybe the second year wouldn't be as expensive tonnage wise as the first year because we made a dent? I don't know the answer.
But more of an area.
I think we need to push more of the fact that Granger picks up one bulk item. I think there's existing things in the contract with Granger now that still aren't pushed out like they should. So, but having banned so many houses. I think it's a debt, that's all it does.
So publicize that better and what I just, I guess I was, it looked to me like we were still bumping up pretty well, so we could be doing some things. But I don't disagree. I mean, already paying for some of them, we really ought to exploit that. I mean, we should take advantage of that.
The momentum from it, but either if you want to participate again, or maybe take it upon themselves to participate Earth Day like we have every year. Where, you know, we can drive that a pre- or the county whole swing here now, meaning the one in Marshall, where you could take certain goods or certain items back.
David, it would be helpful if we knew what the fund balance was, because the back of the envelope calculation.
And I think, uh, it's just not the community cleanup that goes to that account. It's also the bio cleanup. And Jason can talk more about that, but just one bill for that this year was forty thousand dollars. I don't know if he knows or if we know what that's going to cost every year. And I think it's based on what the state requires. But Jason knows a lot more about it than I do.
So. To continue what I was saying, you know, your return on investments at thirty four thousand, assuming a four percent return means that you've got eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a fund balance.
I'll check on that.
Yeah. So even if that's underestimated, we have a million. I'm thinking we probably can afford an eighty thousand dollar community cleanup for two or three years, considering we're making half that amount and maybe we lose a little interest every year. But if we make a commitment for the next two years that we're going to do this, so we can get a handle on it. I, I would be, I would not be opposed to that because I think it's telling our community, we're increasing our expectations for what your house looks like outside. And if you've got stuff on the inside you want to get rid of, great. But for the next two years, you can get that done at no cost to you. After that, then it's, then it's more difficult. So. I see that as a short term. This next year and the year after that, committing to getting the word out, talking, doing all the things we're talking about, you know, get people aware that you can get, you can get your bed disposal or old stove or part of a car, whatever it is, one time cleanup at Granger once a month. Um, and if they don't want to be able to take that responsibility, know that for the next two years, they can come have all their stuff taken away. They just have to put a little sweat equity in getting it out to the curb. And I think if we make that commitment to our community, then when we go back and do things like code enforcement, like you guys had three years in a row, you could have done something to take care of this and you didn't.
Councilman Williams.
I agree with, uh, Councilman French. Um, with the heightened awareness and what we're doing with, uh, code enforcement, I think it would be a, a great opportunity for us to also help community members by continuing down this path as well as, um, what Chief Phib said and, um, making our community members aware of the, uh, opportunity that they have with Granger. And us being able to remove some of the heavier objects out of our homes, um, on a monthly basis. So that they can chip away at some of that access stuff that they have sitting around as well as Earth Day as well. Um, yeah, I like, I like that all good. You know, the problem that we run into is motivating people to get it out to the curb.
Yeah.
That, that seems to be the biggest problem that we have is that there is debris blowing around different properties. The weeds start growing over the, the growth. We ask people to get it out. You know, then we have to take enforcement action. That is the biggest obstacle that we have in getting people to participate in this.
Councilman Dennis.
You know, as I hear everyone talking, maybe as council people, maybe we can take some of the responsibility in terms of getting the word out in our individual precincts. And if there is a problem with people getting the discarded items out to the curb, you know, maybe we can help garner volunteerism, you know, in the community or neighborhoods or something like that. But all of us are something I say, okay, all of us, you know, we're in, we, we have responsibilities to the city, but we also have collaboration and responsibilities in our precincts. So we can take some of the responsibility in terms of getting the word out, in terms of maybe organizing volunteer efforts and things like that in our individual precincts.
Right. On the other side of that coin, I had to share with David's concern is that it is a very stable fund, that we don't want to drain it. We don't want to ever get to a point where we have, it's now costing us money.
Councilman Reed.
I think if we find, if, if, if we get a date a set ahead of time, like now or in January to where we can get information out to churches, to different places that, you know, where people gather. Uh, that will help. Plus, as, as Vivian said, you know, you can have town hall meetings. There's certainly things that you can do that will get the word out to the people. Cause I, I think our last one, we had a lot of time to get the word out. But if they get the word out, they've got the date out, they know what they're supposed to do in order, you know, what they can put out and stuff like that. I think that's going to be a big help. So the sooner we can get a date on when it's going to happen, it's going to be all right then.
Councilman Stewart, did you?
Anything else on that?
Happen.
So, should I add it?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's the consensus.
You're good. Our next fund is, uh, CBB Jude Fund. Our next fund is uh, CBB Jude Fund. We posted, uh, we only have one grant that's basically gone through this fund right now. Uh, it's the Chill Grant. I'll go over to a little history of the grant. Uh, this is a five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, we have a third party administrator who is the Albion EDC that is administering it. Uh, they get fifty thousand for that. Uh, there's four hundred, four hundred and ten thousand that will go to construction projects for different citizens around the city. And the final forty thousand will come back to the city as administrative costs. The uh, grant got a late start at the EDC. Well, let me just go back a little bit. This is a grant that's not between the EDC and the state. It's a grant between the city of, of Albion and the state. The EDC is just the administrator of the grant. So uh, they, uh, with some of the um, things that were going on at the EDC, the grant got a late start. It was supposed to be done in twenty twenty five. Uh, we have got an extension that they told me until uh, three thirty one of twenty twenty six. So uh, the full five hundred or the four hundred and ten thousand for construction projects will be completed hopefully by three thirty one of twenty twenty six.
Question.
Go ahead.
David, the administrative costs, which are what forty percent of this grant?
No, uh, it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant. The administrative costs between the EDC and the city are ninety thousand. Four hundred and ten thousand will be used for the projects. Uh, two, two thirds of the projects will be done before twenty twenty five. The last one third of the projects will be done in twenty twenty six.
So we have a meeting coming up with the new EDC director. Um, in the past, were they able to provide us any information of what those administrative costs covered?
Yeah, it's their salaries and wages for the people that work on those particular debt, particular grant. And um, it's whatever they allocate. Um, they're going to collect fifty thousand no matter what. And then um, whatever they do to collect that is totally up to them, but it's people that work on the grants, their salary and wages, their benefits, their material supplies, whatever they spend to administer, you know, to administer the grant. We don't have anything to do with what they do to provide their service to us.
Okay. I also think the better question would be, what did we do with the forty thousand that we charged the grant? That we don't administer? Being that they administer the grant.
They get it.
No, we held back forty.
No, we did not hold back anything. This was the requirements of the grant. Ninety thousand was for administrative costs. Fifty thousand was for the third party administrator. Forty thousand was to the city and we do work on the grant.
We work on the children?
Yes, we do.
Outside of?
Yes.
So you do the accounting, right?
I do the accounting and I've been helping them submit their FSRs.
FSR?
Those are the reimbursements for the grant money.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. So everything's been going well then?
Um, yeah, we're working together to get this grant handled directly.
I'd just like to say, this grant has been extremely helpful in my precinct and throughout um, the community. It is uh, allowed people to save money basically from having to spend on multiple um, different home projects and different things. Um, so I just want to commend both the city staff and um, the EDC as well for their work on this.
Thank you. Yeah, there's, there's, there's been a lot of you know, good projects that have been taking care of a lot of stuff for citizens. And uh, yeah, I mean, too bad we couldn't have gotten more.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then for uh, twenty twenty six, you can see the budget that we put together. It's just basically the last one third of the grant. Uh, we'll get revenues in and then we'll have some costs. Um, but basically by, hopefully by three thirty one, the grant will be completed and um, everything will be wrapped up and then we'll have to go to a review of the state. So I'm also probably helped for that. That's the only activity besides our interest that we earned and even a lot that we haven't really easily what we get, we actually spend out what our part of this. So now we're um, we're at the two seventy seven now, which is the last part of the uh, Maple Grove. Yeah. And let's go into that. That's on two seventy seven. Um, this was, of course, the property was sold in uh, twenty twenty four, late twenty twenty four. And there was some closing costs uh, incurred at the sale. One of the closing costs was prepaid rent. And it took a little work to actually get that rent back. Me and Colin worked together on that. And that came in in twenty twenty five and there was also some um, bills that were lingering out there that had to be taken care of that we did not know about. The manager had not thrown them over to us. And so there was a little cleanup there in the first part of twenty twenty five. And then the transfer that you see on the third column of one hundred and thirteen thousand nine fifty four was sent over to the general fund. And of course, in the general fund, there was a transfer in of that money. And so now that fund is completely closed out and there's nothing left. And so that's what you see, nothing budgeted for twenty twenty six. All right, now we'll move on to seven thirty one. Not much activity goes through this fund. This is a a fund that's set up for retirement, health care for retirements that aren't in the pensions, the regular pension fund or any one of our funds. Uh, it's very little activity that goes through there. Um, and so what I budgeted for is a little less because we did have one retire, one retiree that passed away. So we're not required to pay him a certain amount every month for his healthcare. And so you'll see that my twenty twenty six numbers are going to be a little bit lower than the projected for twenty twenty five, but it's really not much going on there. It's a fund we don't set up to take care of those retirees until they're no longer.
That's the old hospital, I think.
Yeah.
Back when it was a city run entity, we have a few folks that are still living.
Yeah.
They got retired.
Yeah.
And then we have the Public Safety Pension Trust. This is the pension plan for the police department. And this is really based on the market. Um, I use a budget what um, maybe has happened on average over the last three years. Uh, but I budgeted, the second column is what we budgeted for in twenty twenty five. And it came in a little bit lower. Um, the unrealized gains on investments, which is the I'm looking at the third to last column now, the one point or the one million one oh three four hundred. Came in a little lower. You never know what this fund is going to do. It's all based on a third party that does the investing for the fund. And so um, the numbers come out based on what the market shows. Uh, there was a little bit higher amount paid out to retirees. If we look at account, um, eight seventy four in the middle of the page. Um, the projected number, I anticipated or I set up eight hundred and thirty three thousand, but we actually paid out one million one hundred and thirteen thousand. So there was an extra two hundred and eighty thousand there. And that again is based on payouts to retirees. There's just a combination of things that can make that. But next year, it's pretty much just about what happened this year, except I lowered the interest a little bit because of course the interest rates are going down. But it's just, it's just a snapshot. It's just like drawing a dart. You never know what's going to happen. It's just based on the market. But the fund is very healthy, very healthy.
Let's see. Just a quick one. What's the contractual services?
That is the third party that does the investment. They make all the stock sales. They invest the money. They buy more stocks, sell less stock, buy valuables, fixed assets, equities, whatever.
Do they charge us a flat fee or do they take a percentage?
Based on the money that is sitting in the fund itself. They, they get a percentage of it. Every quarter, they figure out what's in there, then they bill us based on that. So as the fund money goes up, they're feeled.
Gotcha.
Any other questions on uh, Public Safety Pension Fund?
Well, I know, uh, Chief, oh, go ahead. I know Chief mentioned professional services in terms of the new employees that are coming on board. So that is not out of this.
No, I think that's.
These are not professional services that were.
Yeah, I think that's out of his department.
Oh, that's a different one. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, follow up on my other question. Is that in line? The, the basically percentage of um, contractual services to the, to the gain on investment. Does that seem in line or don't you have anything to compare?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a quali, I'm not a qualified investment professional. I mean, the guys that run this, Jason maybe can answer that better, but I think it's the same person we've had or the same company for years. And uh, you know, I think it's probably uh, space, I mean, it's probably um, the same as what's the industrial.
Does it, does anybody know? Cause when I'm looking at like projected twenty twenty five, we've got two thirty seven that we're paying for two, for handling a two million, two million dollar dividends, so I could take.
No, that's just that year.
I get it.
So it, it could be four million.
No, but that's also the entire fund.
Yeah, the entire fund has twenty seven million dollars.
Twenty seven million dollars.
Well, I'm still looking at return based on investment. So the investment, if I'm reading this right, the investment is two hundred and thirty seven, three seven. Right? That we're putting into the, I'm not saying the hard numbers of the dollars, but the the administrative fees we're paying are two thirty seven and we're seeing a return of two million. Projected. And I'm just asking, is that? Like, does that seem like a normal? I think ten percent to me seems high. That's but maybe I'm reading.
Yeah. So it's, this is basically the city's checking account. You know, paid for different services out of the Public Safety Pension Fund. And this is why it's a pension trust. So what this does, it pays for all the bills, the trainings, the investment firm fees, the actuarial fees, uh, anything like that. And then also the banking fees, which is fifth third cases, a chunk of that as well. Fifth third is the custodian of the twenty seven million. And so it goes to pay for their fees as well. So it's not just the Incora who invests our stuff. It's also their
contractual services.
Yeah.
Include fifth third.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's one percent of the total fund that we're paying out.
The fund of the fund.
Right.
So then again, I'm talking about return versus investment fund.
So traditionally by our peers, we are the best funded public pension higher state. Right now, we're a hundred and sixty one percent funded. Our neighbors in the same county are seventy.
That's awesome. And I hope you understand my point and I, I'm, I'm thrilled that we have a well-funded pension. I'm also concerned because it's our job to be good stewards of what we do with the fund. So that's why I'm asking the questions. So are we being good stewards with it? I'm, I confess at the beginning, I'm ignorant whether this is true and this with the numbers I'm asking the question. Doesn't, doesn't look, it looks a little weird to me that we're spending relative to our return that we're spending ten percent. I wouldn't do that. So that's all I'm saying.
It, it's, it's very, um, okay. You've had other companies, other investment firms. Um, and it was roughly the same amount.
And I'm also a big fan of not making a change for chance sake. We have a known, we trust and a good word for it, I get that. I'm opposed to this. That was it. You guys answered my question.
Who's our management firm?
Incora is the portfolio manager. They also do the city's uh, city's mountain four three seven B plan. And then fifth third is the custodians.
How long have we been with Incora?
We were with uh, same investment portfolio manager since this brief interruption, because we left the company, Brad Boyd, who was in the sales. So he's been in since I need eight. Here's your credit.
Pardon?
Here's your credit tour, bro.
Now, Dave.
The uh, two point one million in the twenty twenty six requested.
Yeah.
Uh, six, six, nine account. That's the return on the twenty six million?
That is the return on individual stock sales within the portfolio. That could go up or down. He could hang on to a stock for two years and never sell it. Or he could buy one for two months and sell it.
No, I got you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, good. Um, and then uh, our last one is seven, uh, in the section seven thirty five, which is our Albion Trust Fund. And of course, this was discussed uh, a month or two ago with council. Uh, once the Maple Grove was sold, then it was decided that the trust money based on the trust uh, was to go back to the general fund. And so uh, we brought that to council. And so you can see what I um, originally budgeted for or what we originally budgeted for was just the interest on the investments inside the fund. And then once council approved the money going over to the general fund from the Albion Trust Fund, we liquidated what we could. And we made a transfer of a million forty six thousand eight oh nine. And I'm in the third column now, which is the projected column. And so the big difference between what we budgeted and what actually happened is that transfer. And then for the next year, as there's three separate investments that will mature over the next two or over the next three years. Uh, there will be sixty three thousand four thirty also transferred to the general fund. And then in twenty seven, there'll be another roughly sixty three four thirty. And then hopefully in twenty seven, if the interest rates stay the same, there'll be another sixty three thousand and then the fund will be completed done. So in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight, a little over sixty thousand will be transferred. And then in twenty twenty eight, in seven years' worth, the trust fund will be no more. Any questions on that Albion Trust? All right, now the last three that I would like to do tonight are, are debt service funds. And there was only three pages to this. Um, make sure everybody has that. Um, Fund three sixty two, Fund three sixty three and Fund three sixty nine. So I'll start with the first one. This was a new fund that was set up last year. And this was the road portions of the water system project. Included in that whole project was uh, about uh, two million seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of work that was just for the roads. So to um, uh, pay for that debt, we sold bonds. Um, MTF bonds uh, based on um, twenty twenty four series. And these bonds will be paid over thirty years. And the money that is used. And the money that is used to pay these bonds and the reason why we were able to get these bonds is we are using Act fifty one money from our street funds to pay for these. So there'll be a certain amount coming from the major street fund and the local street fund each year that will be transferred into this fund to make the principal and interest payments until the bond is paid off. And you can see under the transfer end, which is the shaded blue, the second shaded blue towards the bottom. The transfer for twenty twenty five is not as large as what will have to be transferred in twenty twenty six. Because in twenty twenty four, we sold the bonds at a premium and we received roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars of premium, which we can use to make the first couple bond payments. In twenty twenty six, the amount coming from the major local streets will be a lot higher and that much. And that's why you see in my projected numbers the principal and interest payments. This is in the middle. And the transfer that I expect to come in in twenty twenty six is two hundred and sixty one thousand eight hundred to pay the principal and interest. The amount coming in for twenty twenty five is only sixty thousand because again, we had bond premium that we're using to make that first bond payment. And this is a fund that's just set up to pay the debt on those bonds. The way they get paid is transfer in from the major local street funds that get Act fifty one money from the state. And that's what secured the bonds.
What's the return of the bonds?
Uh, thirty years. And that again was a new bond that was set up because of that unset. Then we'll move on to the energy four twenty five generator bonds. These were done um apparently for an energy study back in the day. And money comes from, uh, it's basically works the same way. It's a debt service fund for those bonds that were sold in the past for that particular reason. And the shaded blue area is where the money comes from to pay the bonds. In twenty twenty four, you can see where the money came from. And then in twenty twenty five, you can see where the money is coming from. Each year, the principal amount goes up just a little bit. So the transfers have to be different. They have to increase a little bit. But luckily, the bonds will be paid off in twenty twenty five. And there will be no more money spent on this for twenty twenty six. Any questions on that?
So once these bonds are paid off in twenty twenty five, then we'll.
Next month.
Next month. So then that transfer will be used for bonds or for other purposes?
Uh, no, once the bonds are paid off, this fund will be dissolved.
Okay.
Funds will stay in the funds.
There won't be no more money.
Yeah, stay in the general. Well, as far as what we transferred in from the cemetery city, even sewer, water, and equipment.
Yeah.
We're gonna be doing.
Just stay in general.
There'll be no more transfers from those funds. So this, there will be no need for the transfers because the bonds are going to be paid off here.
It's true.
One last gap.
And this is our third debt service bond. This is for the uh uh, out in building authority. I think this is sort of fire barn. There's uh, I think I put, you know, this will mature on ten one of twenty eight. And uh, the public safety uh helps with this. Money comes in from from the public safety. And that's what helps pay the bonds. Also, we get uh the Jackson Community Ambulance also covers part of this bond. So both the public safety and the ambulance company share in transferring or the revenue from the community ambulance and the transfer in from the public safety is what goes into this bond and helps pay the principal and interest on this. And this will mature on ten one of twenty eight. So year twenty eight will be done for this. So you'll see what I projected for next year. And again, the money that pays these bonds comes from the ambulance company that rents the building and also from the public safety department inside the general fund. Pretty simple situation. And so these are, so after twenty twenty five, we're only gonna have two debt service funds left. And the only other debt that we have is in the water and the sewer bonds and the street improvement fund. All for the sewer and the water system projects. But this, these two debt service fund, whatever we have out there for the bonds that we sold for the water and sewer projects. And those will be shown in the sewer and water fund when I go with those this Wednesday, this Wednesday night. That's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Dr. Clark? So I apologize that I wasn't with you all Thursday night. Um and but I did pick up the packet before I left town um and reviewed that information. Some, and we're gonna have another session Wednesday night.
We are.
Okay.
That's gonna be the water and the sewer, the street fund, the street improvement fund, and the DDA.
DDA.
The DDA. Yeah. I mean, I can, I can go with the DDA right now, but I wasn't given a fund. I I wasn't given a copy of it. If you, if you guys want me to go over that now, I can.
You're on the way.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Or not, yeah. All right, it's a little small, so I'll be nice if I need to. All right, so this is the DDA fund, stricken for the downtown and that uh downtown development. Council approved, is what was approved. So let's start with the revenues here. Um they also get property taxes for the, all the properties that are in the downtown development area. Uh, I budgeted it for, oh, we budgeted for a hundred and ninety thousand or close to two, uh, one hundred nine nine thousand nine eight, nine eighty nine. Uh, I anticipate two hundred thousand.
So eleven hours.
Yeah. And and then for uh for next, actually, the projection is uh two hundred and eleven. It's gonna be out just a little bit. And then for next year, uh, two hundred and eighteen, eight sixty. But those are just property taxes for the properties that are located inside the DDA's. Now of that money, some of it gets transferred back to Brownfield and some of it ends up to the developer and so it will go back to the revolving loan fund. And that is shown in the second highlighted area, hundred and one thousand, seven seventy for twenty twenty five. And then ninety four thousand, a little under ninety five thousand for twenty twenty six.
Ninety eight thousand.
Ninety eight, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Project, yeah, this is. Yeah, so a little under ninety five for twenty five and ninety eight for twenty six. Rest of the revenues are those local grants that come in once in a while. There's interest on their investments. And there's located community stabilization money similar to the other funds. And then uh there were some salaries that were, it was a part-time person that worked at the farmer's market or something there. So the ac- the ac- the activity came in just a little bit higher because of the capital improvements that they did that he talked about earlier. And then for next year, of course, there's only twenty five thousand that she was asking for, that the board was asking for. But that's really the uh the main thing to keep in mind on the DDA is that some of the money that they get for property taxes has to go back to the brownfield. Based on it uh and agreement that was uh usually how the brownfield works, the first five years, uh, the money uh, the person that, or the company that has the brownfields set up will get a tax rate. And so they'll get some of their property taxes back every single year. And it's usually for five years. And then after the five years, sometimes there's also another agreement that allows the DDA, some of the DDA money to go back to the brownfield after the developers paid off. And then it ends up going back to the revolving loan fund to be used for purposes in that fund. Everything else is kind of what she talked about.
The capital outlay.
Yeah.
What does that include?
Uh, I think she talked about it earlier. Some, she did some improvements to the light poles. She put up signs. She put up, these are capital pools are losing things that you get the use of over time and not a one-time or not like a normal everyday expense.
Overing. Did a study back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen about refinding signage. So a chunk of that ninety is, is that money. That is all construct those signs and install those signs throughout the city. And because that project is close to done, you don't need that moving forward.
Yeah, so she only, or they only asked for twenty five thousand for next year. But when I sat down with the DDA, they didn't want to leave ninety thousand available for twenty twenty five. But I think there's still work being done on that situation. I think.
So is that different than the professional services that we were paying for?
Yes.
Community promotions.
Yeah, in twenty twenty five, there was no professional services that were spent. Even though they budgeted for ten thousand. Now, next year she has, or we have twenty five thousand. And I think that she mentioned that was something to do with the DDA plan itself.
We have, and I'll say, if you don't mind, the the DDA plan, and then we have we're working to get projects ready for grant making. So shovel ready projects will be ready to go. We've got this grant writer and hopefully we can get so it's helping. I'm giving that stuff. Capital outlay. If I'm getting it right, I think from this year, we are talking about the signage and a lot of that still to be cleared this year.
Yeah.
And and I have an ignorant question to ask. Is capital outlay line item that we're able to depreciate as opposed to um other kind of expenses or is that not?
And normal accounting for your business, you 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 can set it up in the balance sheet and depreciate it. But you governmental accounting, this is a special revenue fund, you don't set up and depreciate. When you spend it, you expense it. Now, if it was something like this for the water, sewer, uh, swimming fund, we set it up in the balance sheet and depreciate it every time.
So there are instances we can depreciate.
Yeah. Yeah, that's because those departments operate like businesses.
Exactly.
Yeah. Hey.
Okay. Well, what I was going to um something that I want to make sure we're thinking about when we're planning our budget for next year with our movement towards creating housing care on Watson. I want to make sure that we have funds set aside to help support that project, the infrastructure that may be needed. So I don't know.
We're set. Is that going through the EDC?
No, that would be. Yeah, that would be silly.
Five million.
We're working in partnership with EDC from the standpoint that they're making application for that grant. The idea is that we would develop some type of housing along right across the street and on fine. There is about a million dollars that were eligible for. And so the idea is that um the former employee of the EDC um had come across this program. It was our commitment to provide the utilities. Part of the problem that we're still trying to uh figure out is how much are those utilities going to cost? Because we can't pay for something that we can't afford. So um I know that Jason and myself, along with Mickey Bittner of white in, or white engineering, are working toward trying to come up with a plan to give us good cost us. So, yeah, the project is still being pursued with all vigor.
So I just don't want us to be in a point where we are in in a good position to do something, but we don't have funds from the city side to move things along. So I'm I'm hoping that Mickey can give you some type of ballpark figures so that we can kind of project and hopefully set aside some funds. So it's not a, like when we come up with these other construction projects, like, oh, there's something we didn't anticipate. Well, I'm hoping that we can anticipate a certain amount that we can plan for and have somewhere set aside in the budget. Whether or not it has to be, I don't know. And 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 I won't say, but you guys can get that figured out.
Okay.
As long as we kind of have a cushion somewhere for that for next year.
Yeah, David.
I'm looking at you, man.
Dave, thank you so much for all your hard work. Much appreciated. See you Wednesday.
Yeah.
Any other, how much are questions for David while we have him here right now? Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, future agenda items. Anything that we'd like to see? Not coming.
We adopt it every year, so I don't think so.
So it's something to have look over for the fee schedule.
No, we'll have to. Yeah. That key schedule, we prove the charges for you, yeah. This is just.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
No, you cannot. You've talked.
That's better and who's Thursday at one o'clock over all the. So that's after our Wednesday session, so we'll have to see how that goes.
David, speaking about budget and utility funds, I think it's important that we let council know that unlike in the past, we are moving toward a newer era in utility billing. One is we're thinking seriously about going to a monthly billing. The other thing is, is that we plan to have a new meter system in place, which will fairly and accurately read water consumption, which both water and sewer is based on. The reason why I'm bringing this forward now is that sometime during our fiscal year, city council might want to think about re-adopting its rates to reflect a monthly billing and to reflect um a rate that covers the costs of our utilities. Um, we know that a lot of people are um we try to find the balance in that we want to make rates affordable for our customers, but at the same time, there are what we call um enterprise funds that have to break even or show profit. And that's important for council to know. And that's important for council to know. So we are moving forward in that direction. Are we not currently um. Meeting our expenses? We are paying our bills. What, what's at question is the accuracy of the software and the meters.
Right.
So we're. We plan on tightening that up.
Once we get the new meters in.
Yes, and, and the new software in place. We are also looking at a software that will. Give us a much more accurate picture of how we should be charging to keep those utilities. And, and one other thing. These utilities are owned by our citizens. They are the main owners and so it's important that I want to point out, it's not about us versus them. It's about being good stewards of. Their utilities, so.
Future agenda items. Public comment?
Just a quick one. Um, Stacy Frost, four zero one East Porter Street. And I just wanted to say that I found Emily's presentation for the DDA really helpful. Um, I always learn a tremendous amount coming to these council meetings and though I wish I could go to all the different department meetings that are in mornings and evenings. Um, I don't have that much time, so um, getting that update here at council where I usually am um, for the council meetings was, was really good. So if there are more opportunities for that, it would. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, uh, city manager's part.
I have nothing. Present at this time.
Council member comments?
A reminder, I have seven turkeys. With appropriate accoutrement in my car, so please nobody leave without stopping by my car, which is right in front of the school and. Picking up the, the bags with everything you have for your designated family.
And go ahead.
Any expectations? Um, would you like to report back or?
It's fine. As long as it gets to a needy family, I'm happy.
So along. Along, do you have a? Either a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Along those lines of Thanksgiving, uh, one of our local residents, Mike Lopez, who was also known as the hood cook. Um, has graciously offered to provide a Thanksgiving dinner for the, anyone in need. Um, he will be doing this on Thanksgiving Day at the leisure hour at one-thirty. He is planning uh, one hundred meals and he is currently taking donations, taking uh. Food items um. That could be used. Um. So if you are inclined to find out what else he may need, um, he can be reached on Facebook or I can help you get connected. I know Councilman Williams. Is also closely connected with him. Um, but I just wanted to say how grateful uh, I am as the mayor that he has taken this on. It's not easy uh, to take on feeding that many people. Um, but he is an excellent cook, so I have no doubt that the food that he is gonna prepare is gonna be exquisite. Um, and I also want to thank the leisure hour for opening up their doors to allow him to serve dinner there. Um. They are gonna have options to eat in, but also options to take. Um, so again, if you know folks who may be in need, I would encourage you to pass that information along to them for Thanksgiving dinner. Were you gonna?
I got another one.
Okay.
Alright, um, this Saturday, November twenty-second, four H will have their Living the Dream benefit. Which is a fundraiser to help with um. Things that they'll be doing next year. Um, it will be hosted here at the Marshall Opportunity High School. Um. With alumni performances, doors open at six-thirty PM, show starts at seven PM and it's uh, fifteen dollars. And all funds will go to a good use. I'll uh, send that on to you on.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Council member.
Uh, this Saturday, uh, from eleven until four, Millen Barnes will be uh. Giving away free turkeys and things too. And I would also like to ask Colin if he has business cards or either an address, because. In the box that I give the people from him, I always put something in there so that they can send him a thank you card. I think that should.
Yeah, I like to give thank you. I mean, a, a card. I just go and buy a thank you card so they can. At least write a thank you card to Colin.
This Thursday, the Albion Arts Commission will have a rip and cutting at their new building, which is one oh seven East Cass Street. So it's at five-thirty. This is exciting times of the Arts Commission that they actually have a home. Where they can uh, provide galleries and do events and classroom sessions. So if you're available, Thursday, five-thirty, one oh seven East Cass Street. Um, as Emily said, if you have driven downtown at night. You can see the beautiful lights that have gone up in collaboration with the DDA. The Albion Chamber and the Community Foundation, along with businesses, um, local businesses and local residents. Who have purchased those greens and lights for each of the light poles. Um, so. There are tags on each of them, so if you take note of a business, you know, please say thank you. Um, because that was a heavy lift. Um, but we're not done. There's more to come, uh, more lights to come. Uh, that'll be ready from my understanding for our uh, Christmas parade. Um. And so that's some exciting news.
Definitely looks beautiful, don't they?
Yes.
How did we find our name?
They're on the tag.
We just have to go up and down the street until you.
Yes.
There's the president on, all the way in front of the railroad track.
I know. I've cut that one area.
Yeah, but what I wanted to say is I wanted to thank our city staff for helping put them all up. Because they definitely do look beautiful. Um, can't wait for some snow now to come on down to, to make it even more.
Nice.
I, I also want to thank all the people that put the effort into those decorations, because I. My understanding is that the city, you know, most worth putting these up, but also the leaders of those organizations that you mentioned. The Chamber, the DDA, the uh, community fund. So they're actually physically out there lugging that stuff around. Picking it up from different places, tying the, tying the tags to the poles. This wasn't just a farm out to other people. These folks were in there actually doing the work.
Yeah.
So. Kudos to them.
Yeah, it looks beautiful so far. So, and Miss Stacy, you had a hand in it as well with the Christmas tree?
Oh, no. Not this.
No.
She's on the tree for now.
Okay.
But go down and take a photo, like a selfie and hang downtown mountain in it and share it up, so other people know they can come and.
Yeah.
Enjoy it.
Definitely festive, so much appreciated. Any other council member comments? Wonderful. Do I have a look in the winters? On favor, say aye. I proposed.
So this was really confusing until I.